Recording.
All right. Good evening and welcome. I'm Mo Handle, Select Board Chair. The entire Select Board is present. We are operating under COVID-19 emergency edicts from the governor, which allows us to meet virtually. So that's what we're doing here. I would ask that you keep in mind that if you are recognized to speak, everything you say may be recorded, will be recorded and part of a permanent record. I would also ask that people who are not speaking but are here in the Zoom room to please keep their microphone on mute unless they're speaking. We do have town staff here. Dave Davidson is here. Sandy Sincotta is here. The town manager, of course, Kate Fitzpatrick is here and Katie King, Assistant Town Manager, is here. So without further ado, the first item on our agenda is a certificate of appreciation for Elaine Saunders, Commission on Disabilities Committee, longtime member. And I would ask the Vice Chair, Matt Borelli, to read the certificate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have your certificate of appreciation from the Town of Needham, Massachusetts Select Board. Words with Elaine R. Saunders in recognition of over 29 years distinguished service to the Town of Needham. Thank you for your oversight and guidance to the Needham Commission on Disabilities, your selfless dedication in serving as a member from when the commission was first established in 1991 and as co-chair for so many years. Congratulations. Signed this 18th day of August 2020, the Select Board.
And is that a motion, Matt?
It is, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Motion is made and seconded by John Bullion. Motion made by Matt Borelli, seconded by John Bullion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Or any comments people care to make? It's a tremendous record of service and we're very grateful and we wish her well and her retirement.
Absolutely.
That brings us to the vote. I'll ask Matt Borelli.
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley.
Yes.
Dan Matthews.
Yes.
And John Bullion.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for EverSource Energy for a grant of location on Mark Tree Road. And Maureen Carroll is listed on my agenda. Is she present? From EverSource. Maureen, before I ask you to speak, I would just ask the town manager if the application is complete and all of the paperwork is in order.
It is, Mr. Chair. It is. There was some work done on this grant of location before the hearing occurred. I don't know if the builder is here, Sandy.
Is the builder here?
Yes, he is. Let me bring him over.
Okay.
Mr. Wolf.
So, Maureen, before we recognize you on this grant of location, we want to discuss with Mr. Wolf the fact that he began the work without proper approval.
Hi, yes. My name is Juan Wolf. I actually, I am a builder. I'm a general contractor new here to Massachusetts. This is the first house we build in Needham. I certainly have a license and insured electrician and I hired for this. And I wasn't aware of the process of this grant of permit. I really apologize. I just realized in the process where, when the electrician did all the job, that he shouldn't have reached the post where he reached. So we took that down and we we went back and put the box in our premises inside and then so EverSource could go through the process. I was, you know, I discovered the process and certainly now I know the process and will try to follow the rules next time. I wasn't aware of this process.
So the work is incomplete pending EverSource's ability to get the grant of location?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's where we are. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wolf before we bring on Maureen Carroll? All right, Maureen. Would you, welcome.
Hello, my name is Maureen Carroll and I'm here on behalf of the EverSource Company. And I'm here tonight on a petition. The petition is on Mark Tree Road. It's going to be northwesterly from hole 41/20. It's going to be approximately 17 feet west of Fairview Road. It's going to be about a distance of about five feet of conduit. This is going to provide underground electric service to 169 Mark Tree Road.
Okay, and we've determined that the paperwork is complete, that the work has been reversed. So that if you get the grant of location, then we can proceed. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Bullion has his hand up.
I was going to make a motion when you're ready.
I am ready.
I would move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately five feet of conduit in Mark Tree Road. This work is necessary to provide underground electric service to 169 Mark Tree Road.
Is there a second? Mr. Borelli seconds.
Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Kate. Thank you for reminding me. This is a public hearing. So if there is any member from the public here who would like to weigh in on this grant of location, please indicate now. How would they do that?
Using the raise hand feature? Raise your hand.
So raise your hand using the Zoom method and Sandy Sincotta can bring you into the meeting. Is there anybody raising his or her hand, Sandy? Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Sandy. We come, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I share everybody's frustration here with the process. This is, I don't know, the sixth or seventh time this has probably happened in the last couple of years. And we've implemented, you know, guidelines and notices and bold on the permitting to try to curtail this type of activity. And I understand that things fall to the cracks and people aren't familiar with all the rules in town. But I think moving forward, we have to come up with a concrete first-time offense fine or some other type of method to get this thing to slow down because other people are playing by the rules. And I know, sir, that was not your intention to do this. I understand that you hire people and they're not familiar with the rules. But I do think you're not the first and, you know, I would love you to be the last, put it that way. So that's my frustration and just something to think about for the board.
I think we all share your frustration and John wants to say something to that issue as well.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to, you know, just say to Mr. Wolf, you know, you're probably wondering to yourself, why is this such an important thing for the board to, as we're wrestling with this? And the reason is that, you know, we've been seeing a lot of these grant locations. And what sometimes happens is that abutters to the property that you are working on haven't been notified. And sometimes the work is done in a way that may damage a tree or damage some other planting that they may have or impact some other part of their property. And if the work is already done, they don't get an opportunity to weigh in, at least at the earliest stage, in order to maybe change the way the work is done. So, and we want to be particularly cautious and respectful to people that live in close proximity to construction projects, especially people that are abutters to them. So it's, you know, what I say to builders that contact me early on is I say, reach out to the people that are abutting the property before you do anything. Just make sure everybody understands and they're happy and that if they have any questions, they can ask you. So that's the reason that you're hearing we're speaking the way we are. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Wolf a question? Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
If you've built in other towns, have you needed a grant of location from them?
No, the thing is, in terms of remodeling, I have done a lot. But going underground with a service was the first time for me. So that's why I start asking around and there are some towns that does and some other towns I don't. I actually, my wife and I, we are, we like the Needham community. The neighbors have been great. And we want to, you know, to create a long-term relationship here. And we certainly want to play by the rules. I think it's fair. It's totally fair and understandable.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything before we take the vote? That being the case, we'll start with Mr. Bullion.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Ms. Cooley.
Yes.
Mr. Borelli.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Maureen. We need to find a way to let builders know when they come in for a permit. I think that this is a highly important issue to us. John?
I was going to move the appointments and the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Borelli to move the consent and appointments agenda. Is there any discussion? Harry Dunne, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to our COVID-19 update. And I understand Tiffany Zeig, who is a public health nurse, Town of Needham, will be joining us. Welcome, Tiffany. You've been on Zoom before, I assume, and you know to mute your mic if you're not speaking and that anything you say is being recorded. And the floor is yours. Welcome.
Perfect. Thank you. So Tim's on a very well-deserved and needed vacation right now. So he asked me to kind of talk a little bit about our current COVID response and what's happening with all of that. Some of the main things we're working on, Tim's been working closely with the schools on helping them with guidance and figuring out what's best and what's useful for reopening. I've been working closely with Dr. Stern and Barbara with the schools as far as kids being ill and what's best and what's going to be our process on kids returning to school and contact tracing and things like that. So we're working closely with that. I think Tim sent along two maps or flow charts about our current cases that we had up till August 5th. One is Needham's total confirmed cases. And if you can look at that, you can see that we go up. Our peak was definitely May, beginning mid-ish May. And then we kind of have leveled out, had a slight uptick in mid to beginning of July, but hopefully remaining steady from there. Needham residents are definitely paying attention and heeding the warnings and the signs. And we've gotten a lot of calls about recent travel and things like that, which is great to hear because we know they're taking care of themselves and their family in the proper way and wanting to do what's best. And that's great. And then the next one is Needham Total Daily Cases, which, as you can see again, kind of showcases it just in a different way. Those are our cases that we have seen on a daily basis as far as confirmed cases. And you can see our big spike was also again mid-ish May with the lull through June and part of July and then just a slight uptick, but I believe we're remaining calm. And then with that, I also wanted to just kind of highlight and touch on Mass DPH has recently put out that there were some cases that went to a laboratory that were considered false cases that were revoked due to the lab having an issue. And we were part of that. So our case numbers will change over the next couple of weeks as they start to revoke some of those cases. So some of that intake and tick we saw in the mid to end July will be changed. So that data will adjust hopefully in the next little bit to reflect our accurate count. Yeah, yeah. So we're going through it. We're trying to trudge on through as we normally would while working on this. And then one thing I will touch on as well is we are working on a COVID-appropriate flu clinic. And those will come towards October, end of September, beginning of October, hopefully as soon as I get confirmation of our flu vaccination.
Mr. Chair, I would say that Tiffany's also been working with Olin College on their reentry plan. Tiffany, if you want to touch on that?
Sure. So Olin College is only having close to a little less than a third of their students returning. They're planning on having about 125 students come. They have set up their own isolation space. They have also are looking to hire a provider who will order testing for their staff. They are not having any commuter students come. It's only the residential students that will be there. And they are being tested through the Broad Institute, through Babson College because they share health services. So we have worked through how that contact will work, who they will contact. I'll be the contact along with their VP and will communicate back and forth and utilize the CTC should we have any outbreak or issues with cases in Olin College.
Thank you. May I ask you a question?
Sure, of course.
I get a lot of calls and I'm sure my colleagues do complaining about people not wearing masks in public or near public places. How do you feel we're doing with respect to other communities? And are we doing everything we can to inform people what the rules are and what our encouragement is for them to wear masks, even if they're not particularly required in given situation?
I do think we are doing well comparatively to a lot of communities. When I sit on the DPH calls, you hear a lot of back and forth about different regions, I will say, that have better response with the mask-wearing than not. And I do feel that Needham does really well. Like I, listening to one of our DPH calls, walked to Trader Joe's to pay the grocery bill for the seniors. And everybody almost was wearing a mask. If they weren't wearing masks, they were definitely in smaller groups, separated, but everybody in the store was wearing a mask, all of that. So as far as what we see and what we do, I think the Needham community is really understanding the need and the desire because we all want to get students back to school. We all want to try to open up as many businesses as possible and not have to have any kind of halt. I think as far as concerns, we are still receiving those about people not wearing masks, about different businesses, employees not wearing masks, things like that. And we report on those as much as possible. As we get the concerns, we look into them. And Dr. Tara and Diana have definitely helped with that response in the respect of talking to businesses and things like that. So we are working as much as possible. It's just not as capable to fine as people would like. We don't have that capability in that process to be able to go through that. So we continue to educate those great signs that they got printed and posted up by Memorial Field and a couple of other ones around town. I think those big spots, the website. We continue to push things on social media and get our response out there and our education. And we'll continue to do that, especially as we start the school year.
Thank you. I know you guys are working really hard and I know we all express our appreciation for that. But other people on the board, would you like to have a discussion? John?
Tiffany, thank you for the report. Another thing that I'd like to touch on, get your feedback on, is how are we handling nursing homes and assisted living homes and independent living facilities? Where early on, it seemed as though those were, you know, they're obviously at a very high-risk type of age group and population. What type of reports have we been getting out? What type of protocols have they been taking? And are they pretty much, you know, have they squashed the virus in those establishments?
So thanks for watching. I don't know.
Okay, okay, wrong word.
Well, no, it's a good way to say it. I'm just not comfortable saying, yes, it's gone because it's not. It's still in the community. So there's still that possibility that it could be in our long-term care facilities. But as far as each long-term care facility has a staff member that I contact as needed. It was almost every day when we were in the thick of it through June or through May up to early June. But we contact as needed now. And each long-term care facility or assisted living that is partially state-funded or has a license through the state, has an epidemiologist through Mass Department of Public Health also assigned to them. And so the three of us work together and get the reports if they have any new cases, if they have any deaths. They are reporting that to DPH Weekly and hopefully sometimes to us Weekly as well. It's just a matter of how busy they get sometimes if they remember to do that. But, so we do have contact with them and with each EPI that is involved there. As far as their processes, what happens in each facility, it's based off of their current rates and their current positive staff members and residents. So based off of that is based off of how DPH has determined what PPE they can use when and in which scenario. And that's all determined by Mass Department of Public Health and the Quality and Healthcare Safety Commission. They're all in touch, tons and tons with each other and we're monitoring that. But we definitely are seeing a calm, which is great. They are all seem to be doing well. And I've touched base with most of them as of last week and they all seem to have a handle on their processes and feel comfortable right now. So that's great.
Great. Thank you.
Matt, did you have something?
Sure. And Tiffany, thank you. And I echo, I know the work you have done and the department has done in this challenging time. It's incredible. So thank you. I just had two questions. Number one, the hospital, discussed with the hospital, just assuming that their load is pretty low considering what I've seen, what I'm seeing with the trends, but just trying to get a handle on how they're faring. And then second, there's been a lot of discussion on face coverings. I guess one study about a gator maybe not be the best face covering for people, whether or not that's true, I don't know. But I was told, and we're having Superintendent on, that that might not be recommended for school. I don't know, has there been any decision on the correct face covering or are we still up in the air on what that should be?
Sure. Hospitals, as far as BID Needham, we're in touch. I'm in touch mostly with the infection control nurse. We touch base on case-by-case basis. It seems that they're pretty calm, but they do, the main communication we have right now is with any long-term care residents that are being transferred to them and things like that. So we do touch base on those cases. As far as community testing and how often they see it, I think they're at a low, but I can't fully speak because we haven't had a, like, a numbers conversation lately about what they're seeing as far as how many they're seeing a day. But with our case load and our positive confirmed cases being so low, that hopefully they're being able to maintain that and it's calm for them. As far as face coverings, so face coverings, yes, there's starting to be reports come out about which ones are best, which ones are not. The main thing to remember with face coverings is that if you have an open at the bottom, there is definitely more ability for that to float around and come up. Like if you don't have a solid face covering over your face and it's amongst your face, there's always that possibility for it to float and change and adjust. And then the person that's wearing it, for them to, if they sneeze or cough, that just falls right down and it's open. As far as what's been approved or not for the schools, that I'm not 100% sure that has been done. I know that Dan's up next and maybe they can speak to that, but I haven't had much discussion as far as which one they would prefer. I do know that they're not doing N95 because of fit testing. So that's as far as I know on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Matt? Any, Dan, and then Mary Ann?
Tiffany, I want to thank you and everybody in the town service that's working on this. You know, this is really taking a real community effort, I think, to make this effort work. And you're at, you guys are at the center of that. And I think we've really made good progress, but this is going to be with us for a long time. And it's going to take patience and persistence. So it's good to emphasize that. I really appreciate the fact that the townspeople have been as cooperative in this difficult effort as it can be. And I just want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Mary Ann?
Again, thank you to all the work from the Health Department. I was just going to comment. I know in all the sensitivity about masks, right? And I think all of us probably walk into a space and look to see who's masked and who's not and who has it covering their nose or not, right? Because covering your nose is definitely a no-no. It doesn't matter what kind of a mask you have on if it's not covering. But at the same time, I think that it's worthwhile for all of our citizens to keep in mind that they do not have to be the mask police, all right? That if they need to report it, they can definitely report it. But there's also a sense that, you know, the rule is, right? That you're going to wear a mask anywhere indoors with other people. It's required, all right? And if you're outdoors, if you're unable to maintain your six feet of distance, then you should be wearing a mask. So I usually say to people, when I get, when I'm out walking and I reach downtown, I put on my mask. I was thinking last weekend, as I walked at 7:30 in the morning and encountered my first person 15 minutes from my house and gave her 12 feet of birth, and she asked me why I didn't have my mask on since I was carrying it. You know, they don't, you don't have to be the mask police. And I would have been more than comfortable if she wanted to tell me that at 12 feet, I was still too close to her and she wanted me to be farther away. That, you know, you can always say, please give me some more space. That's often a better way to ask that question.
Yeah, absolutely. I get a lot of calls about, especially from some of our elderly residents who are concerned about, how do I handle this situation? And I say, it's up to your comfort level. You do what's comfortable for you. And we have to respect everybody else's comfort level as well. So working together to make this a great response is really what it's all about. So yes, thank you.
Tiffany, do you have time?
To be comfortable wearing a mask indoors. That's just the way it goes.
Yes. So I didn't mean to cut you off, Mary Ann. Tiffany, do you have time to stay for Dan Gudekund's presentation?
Sure.
Just in case questions come up with respect to any of the public health implications he's talking about?
Sure. I will try my best. Again, I haven't been on it. Tim's been on it more, but yeah, I'll try my best to answer.
You're welcome to stay. And if you have any further comment in his, I'll certainly write you a message. Thank you very much. Any hearting questions or comments for Tiffany Zeig? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Superintendent of Needham Schools, Dan Gudekund. And I would like to invite him to come to our virtual table and give us a report on what's happening in the fall. Welcome, Dan.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
In a moment, Mr. Chair, I will, I'm going to ask if I can borrow your screen so I can share a couple of slides. If that will be okay.
Can we do that, Sandy? We have the ability to do that?
Yes.
Yes, of course.
So before I do that, I appreciate the town manager asking me to speak on some of our work that we're doing in Needham Schools regarding equity. So that's really the point of my being here this evening. And I know the town manager suggested that I may want to give a brief update on school reopening. And I'm prepared to really just share some, you know, some high-level planning and happy to answer any questions. I think before I share the slides, I think what I want you to know about our work around equity in the Needham Public Schools is that it is a work in progress and we are a work in progress. It's work that we tackled for many years. I think our efforts have become stronger in recent years, particularly as a result of an equity audit that we conducted a couple of years ago. And I also believe it's a community effort. The Needham Public Schools is a reflection of the broader community. We're not an island unto ourselves. Our children come from many families, faith traditions, neighborhoods, two communities, Boston and Needham. And so we, as all those children gather in the schoolhouse, recognize that we're dealing with children from different backgrounds, with families who have different values and needs. And so we try to bring that all together in the schoolhouse and to make sure that we can provide a program that values all those perspectives and tries to make sure that our schools are equitable for all of our children and for our staff. I also want to emphasize from the very beginning, and I hope I will close with this too, that the Needham Public Schools has an exceptionally strong relationship with the Needham Police Department, particularly through our School Resource Officer Program, where we have two amazing School Resource Officers who work with all of our students and with our staff and administrators to really help children and families solve problems. That's truly what they're in the business of. They work with us collaboratively. They teach classes. They provide demonstrations. Of course, Rocket is a constant companion. I should have mentioned that we have three SROs, Rocket being the third one. And they really are a presence in our schools to assist us with our mission to provide a great education for all children. a great education for all children. And I will tell you that I think it would be a challenge for us to try to do a lot of the work that we do, supporting all families and children, without a partnership with Police Chief Schlittler, his team, and our School Resource Officers, RJ and Adrian. So thanks to the Select Board and to the town manager for supporting that program and providing that level of support and education for our children and in the community in Needham. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think I will borrow your screen for a moment, if I may, and I'd like to share a brief presentation. So as I mentioned, there is no question that this community is very much interested in providing support for all folks and all students and all children and families, regardless of whom they are. And this has certainly been a particular mission in Needham Public Schools, where we have strived to make sure that there is equity for all of our children. And what I wanted to share with you specifically this evening is that we have structured ourselves with what we're calling the Real Coalition. And I'll take you through a couple of slides that share with you what we're trying to do. So the Real Coalition, or the Race Equity Access and Leadership Coalition, provides a structure and a framework to support and guide our efforts to be culturally proficient, anti-racist, and to eliminate barriers for all children. The Real Coalition's been around for a couple of years. I'll talk to you a little bit about some of our action steps and plans. We are committed as a school community to engage staff and families to make sure that there are conversations and actions that will promote equitable practices for our school community. And the Real Coalition helps provide that guidance and structure. I want to let you know that just about a year ago, as we were thinking about starting school, we had several students who had different backgrounds and different stories, whether they were gay students, black students, a recent immigrant to this country who, from Syria, who spoke no English until she came to Needham. We brought students together to talk to our staff, to share their stories, believing that really the student voice is the most powerful in letting the faculty, letting our students themselves, and also our community know what their needs are and how they want to grow and learn and achieve in the Needham Schools. So the Real Coalition is about two years old. It involves several folks, leaders, district leaders, school leaders, parents, teachers, students, and community members. And we have, it's a structure that has six general subcommittees supporting some of our key areas of growth. And I want to tell you, these areas of growth, we have not figured it out, we are far from having figured it out. We have a lot of work to do, but we have some good people in place trying to tackle some issues that are really quite important to us. So we have a Subcommittee on Policies and Practices, and that, we really believe is important. It's an area where we need to change practices, whether they're around student discipline, how we assign students, how we report to the state, school committee policies, for example, on admissions of our Metro program that was recently passed by the school committee. So policies really do help guide a community, and they help set the table for what's going to happen in a community. The other Subcommittee, which is incredibly important, is the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee. And here, we try to do work to look at what practices in our classrooms, what textbooks, what materials are we using that are representative of all of our children and also promote our anti-racist and culturally proficient activities and understandings. Tied to that, number three is professional learning. And that's how are we training our staff? What opportunities are we providing for their learning and growth? Thinking about being an actively anti-racist school community, thinking about being culturally proficient, trying to understand different people from different backgrounds, requires some support, training, experience, collaboration, and conversation. And so our professional learning group helps to provide some of that leadership as we think about training and professional development. We will be doing some of that work when we return in early September. We also have a Subcommittee focused on hiring and employment. Through that group, we look at what are we doing to make sure that we are going as far as possible to find as diverse a workforce as we possibly can. Diverse might mean more male teachers at the elementary level, and it means more black teachers and teachers of color in our schools for all of our children. With near 20% of our students in the Needham Public Schools, students of color, we recognize that we have a long way to go to make sure that we can get talented folks of color in our classrooms before our children, interacting with them and providing them with the high-quality instruction that we expect. We also have a Committee dedicated to school culture and climate. What's going on in a school? How are not only folks behaving, but how are they relating to one another? What are the programs specifically that exist to support children and families in our efforts to be more equitable and to promote anti-racist activities? And then finally, we have a Communications Committee that really does help us promote, share, engage the broader community on our work in Needham and beyond. In this past year, some of our accomplishments, this is really only a few because so many people have been involved in writing articles that have been published, in activities at the schools, participating in different forums and hosting different meetings. But what I want you to know is that we've tackled some curriculum instruction projects for those who've continued over the summer. By the way, we've had different elementary parent groups, and that includes book groups. The Middle School Social Justice League and the Launching Scholars Program exist to boost student achievement and activism in the area of race and equity. The High School Castle Scholar Program is for those students who need a boost to provide them with a path toward upper-level classes, including Advanced Placement and Accelerated Classes. The Courageous Conversations on Race is a program designed and supported by several adults, including you know her well, Beth Pinnels in the community, Erin Seekout, our high school principal, Keith Ford, Joanne Allen Willoughby, Leslie Smart, Tom Denton, and many others. And this past year, several students learned and studied about how they can have Conversations on Race, and they provided that to every ninth grader. And they will continue to do that this coming year for incoming ninth graders, so that students themselves are helping to lead the conversation on race. Students have also begun a program, Students Advocating for Equity. On our website and on the Needham channel, we've promoted some of their programming and interviews with those students. We're also thinking about how our teaching and learning can be culturally responsive. And so we've developed a framework, Know Yourself, Know Your Students, and Know Your Practice, that strives to embed equity in everything that we do, and making sure that we're including a list of cultural responsive competencies, reflective questions, and tools and resources for staff and families. And we're really trying to do some simple things that don't require additional work, but that immediately are inclusive. I'll give you an example. I've been here as your superintendent for 15 years, and it was not really until this past, I want to say December or January, that finally, at the bottom of my emails, I included statements in the primary languages that are not English, that many of our students from the countries in which they originate, Russian, Chinese, Spanish. And on the bottom of my email, there's a statement that if you need to get this translated or you need further information in your language, here's where you go. Now, it took me so many years to include a simple message in three different languages at the bottom of my emails, but what that did is, it's not extra work for me. It allows anybody who is unfamiliar with the English language to click a link and then therefore become part of the community. It's a small thing, but there are little things like that that we can do as adults in this community to be inclusive and to support those who speak differently or look differently than us. We're also proud of the number of staff of color we were able to hire year over year. I know in this coming year, we will not be making as much progress in hiring staff of color. Sadly, the pandemic and our hiring processes, like everyone else, got thrown up in the air, but we have been making progress, consistent progress, slow but consistent progress through our efforts in attracting staff of color. And then finally, you've heard me talk before, I've shared with you last year, the Portrait of a Needham Graduate Competency, that provides a framework and a shared vision for the future for all Needham students. And one of the competencies does specifically talk about the need, the importance of providing and promoting an actively anti-racist culture for all of our children. I won't go through these now, I could, but I want you to know that there are links here, and I'll make sure that you get this, that Sandy gets this PowerPoint to share out. But we have had some recent communications. This was in May, that the entire school leadership team, principals and central office, sent out to families about what was going on nationally in the wake of the George Floyd killing. Also, an interview with WBUR that discussed the protests and superintendents of the Metro Districts joined together in a call of unity. And then I will, one I will click on if it works here, and it's kind of exciting, but recently, the American Association of School Administrators, which is for superintendents, in the article that just came out this week, published something that I had written. No, I'm not colorblind, and I share that with you. That's also on our website. It was great to be, an honor to write for them and share an experience I had in Needham about supporting students of color and our efforts in that regard. Finally, I think, and I will go to this webpage, we really try to use our webpage as a clearinghouse, if you will, to share information with the community and let folks know what is available and what we're trying to do. And I draw your attention to it now because it does, the links do provide information on the Real Coalition, as I just outlined, some of our equity updates to the school committee, some of our policies and practices that support equity, and then it goes on from here to the various different committees I mentioned. We also post in here regularly some of the features that our students and staff are busy promoting to the community. Here, I believe, is a link to, yes, to the Needham School Spotlight, where we had students talking about equity and their work in equity. So I want you to know, and the community to know, that this is a work in progress. It has good information, it's incomplete information, and we look forward to this year making sure that there's even more that we can share with the community. And then lastly, I think I'd like to conclude with this. One of the things that we are really trying to do is to highlight student voices. And I'm sensitive about saying, students are the ones who have to do this, because to be perfectly honest with you, it's completely unfair and unreasonable to assume or to think that our children, our children are the ones who have to speak up for themselves, that they have to be the ones to say, this isn't right. It really is up to the adults in the community and the white adults. The burden is on us in many ways to be leading this charge. And yet, our students' voices are powerful. As you know, from gathering Needham High School in Memorial Field several weeks ago, and then marching to Town Hall, and subsequently having an art festival at Needham High School on a Sunday afternoon, celebrating art, and it's the nexus of art with anti-racist work and equity. So I think it's just incredibly important to point out that we have amazing young women and men of all races and backgrounds who are trying to work together to make sure their voice is heard and that we are supporting them as adults in this community. It's not up to them, and yet we need to enlist them so that we can help make their future brighter and make sure that they have an opportunity to grow, learn, and achieve in the Needham Public Schools and beyond. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will stop sharing my slides, if I can. And I will turn it back to you, happy to answer any questions that the Select Board Mo, you're on mute. We don't know who you called on.
I originally called on Matt, but do you have anything, Matt?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then Mary Ann, and then John.
Thank you for all your work on this and the school committee's work. I know it's a sensitive subject, and in many ways, you've been out in front of this. I have two children in Needham Public Schools, and I see the curriculum going way back. So I know it's an important and always has been an important topic of discussion and learning for the schools. And I think in this critical time, what I'm seeing is diversity, we all agree is terrific, but the part that I see missing sometimes is the unity, that you can talk about the SRO, which I've dealt with at the schools, you know, a person seeing their work, and you can support them and also support diversity. They're not mutually exclusive, and sometimes I think where we sit and what we hear is, you're either in one camp or the other. And I just hope as we move along in the, you know, the schools, that we see that we're diverse, but we're also united as a community, as united together, and we celebrate those differences. So I know it's a tough subject, it's evolving, we're always learning different ways to approach it, but I just commend the difficult work that you've embarked on. So thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary Ann?
Thank you, Dan. This was actually not the presentation that I was expecting at all tonight, but I do thank you for it, and it is interesting to hear where that work is currently. It made me think, as you talked about the simple action of changing your signature file at the end of documents and at the end of your emails for the ability to have it translated, if that's needed. Wondering if that is appropriate on a variety of places on the town's messages, if that's something that we need to think about doing more regularly. I had been thinking that we might be talking a little bit with an overview about what was happening with reopening the schools. I know you've spent lots of times talking to parents about that. And so while you're here, I would just say to you, are there any particular worries or concerns that you have where we can be helpful as you're working to get your schools, our schools, back open for students in town? Because I know there's a lot of moving parts, and hopefully, we're all working together.
But... Yeah, there are. And I hope, I didn't, I hope I didn't miss the mark for you, Ms. Cooley, above my presentation, but I'm...
It's always good to hear.
Oh, it's good to see you and to be at the Select Board. So sure, I'm happy to pivot to that. We are on track to reopen the Needham Public Schools to children on September 14th in what we are calling a hybrid model. The hybrid model will involve roughly a half of our children in one week, while half are in school one week, the other half are at home learning, and then they swap the following week. That's the rough, basic structure of the hybrid model. The purpose of that is to minimize the total number of students and contacts in the school at any one time and to provide some level of social distancing anywhere from three to six feet. So that's what we are moving toward. That's what we've submitted our plan to the state, the school committee. The school committee has been amazing. I have to give a shout out to Chair Andrea Longo-Carter, who's been fielding hundreds of emails from families. And Dr. Barr and every member of the school committee have been fielding lots of questions and providing leadership in this area. They have voted our plan to support the reopening of schools, and we're on track to do that. I will tell you that we have a lot of work to do. We have an enormous amount of work to do between now and August 31st, when teachers return. For example, we are negotiating with our Needham Education Association and the five bargaining units, because this is a clearly, because it's a health emergency and we're going to be doing things completely different, we need to sit down at the table with them to negotiate what that looks like. Fortunately, we have tremendous partners in the Needham Education Association, and they're working very collaboratively with us and closely. You may have heard in the news that that's not the case in every community, and actually that's true. Fortunately, in Needham, we're in a very different place with our teachers. I say that, though, in that many, many of our teachers are very anxious about returning to school, and there are many families who are anxious, too. They're not sure that we will be ready. The specific concern, frankly, is around, there are two. It's around, will it be safe? Will someone get... It's around, will it be safe, will someone get sick, and what do we do if someone gets sick? We're working on that, Tiffany Zike absolutely has been involved in that, and we're working on those protocols. The other piece is, will the buildings themselves be ready? Will the ventilation systems, particularly at Needham High School, which, although it's new, has different ventilation systems and different HVAC systems that do not always talk to each other? Hollard, which, as you can imagine, does not have an updated system, but does have a ventilation system. And Mitchell, which is our oldest school for children, it also has a ventilation system, a Univent system in every classroom. What my concern is, is will those schools, as we look at them, and the town has invested funding and resources to have them studied right now, I worry, will they actually, will the reports allow us to address some of these issues before students and staff return? If the issues that may surface, and I hope they're minimal, and I hope they're easily fixed, if they're very few, then I'm hoping we can tackle them and open school. But if there are ventilation issues, or the trajectory of the disease suggests that we should not open the school, we will not open the school. We will open remotely to children. So that is where we are in a nutshell, Ms. Cooley, and members of the Select Board. A lot of people are working literally around the clock to make this happen, our town partners in public health and building maintenance, the town manager's office, the town manager herself has been involved in our steering committee, providing advice and resources. But there are a lot of moving parts and pieces, and quite frankly, these all need to come together very quickly so that I can look at the data. Ventilation, for example, our procurement of personal protective equipment is another example, and the health metrics that we are developing to determine whether or not we would be remote, or whether we'd come back from remote to hybrid. I need to look at all of that and say, yes, we're going to continue, we will be healthy and safe enough to open, or not. And that time is really within the next couple of weeks. So I'm immensely anxious about that, I have faith in the process and the people that I've been working with, and yet, I know there's a way to go, ways to go before we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Bullion?
Thank you. Dan, thank you. I know that, you know, it's, you have, you and the school committee have an extraordinarily challenging task before you. When you're dealing with children of any age, especially children that are young, as we have all had, the parents are very concerned, they're very concerned for the safety of their children, they're very concerned for the future of their children. I think one of the things, you know, and there's no question that members of the school committee field far more phone calls from parents of kids than members of the Select Board. However, I think all of us have received calls, I know I certainly have, starting when the schools were closed, and you pivoted to a remote learning dynamic. I think people felt at that time that the schools weren't ready, but I think, you know, my response was, nobody knew this was coming, nobody could reasonably foresee that it would be a pandemic, it would be so widespread and so crippling. And I think that the hope right now is that, you know, regardless of what happens with the hybrid method, and I applaud you for moving in that direction at the beginning, I think many people, myself included, feel as though, once we get into the fall, once we get into the winter, and the colder weather, and flu season, that I think the dynamics of sickness and overall health, you know, might create a dynamic where maybe kids aren't in school, and maybe remote learning is more, is more robust. And I guess that, I have no doubt that you are prepared to offer a remote, a robust remote learning plan for the students of the town, because I think that, you know, we all know, we have a long winter to get through before we see to the other side of this. And, you know, I just, I think that there's a lot of work to do, and thank you so much for the work that you do, and it's very challenging, I know that, I know that. So, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, and if I may, Mr. Chair and members of the Select Board, I appreciate that, and I, while we are part of the complications of this, the hybrid model is the most complicated model to implement. Having students just come back to school, as we did, you know, last year at this time, that's the easiest, we know how to do that, that's who we are, that's the way we operate. Having students just stay home and be remote from day one is actually less costly, it's the easy, in some ways, the easiest. However, I don't believe it's the right thing for children right now. I think the right thing for children, and the health metrics suggest that the important thing is to bring children back into the schoolhouse as soon as we can, to provide a learning experience for them, because that cannot be replicated online. We are also, at the same time, developing a cohort of students, because we were required to by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, those children who just choose to be remote learners, for health reasons or personal reasons. We have approximately 600 to 700 of those students, so we are actually creating a ninth school in Needham to address. These students represent every grade level, they are pulled out of every school, and they're looking for a complete remote-only option. Plus, we have to provide them special education and English language learner services. This is an enormous task that we have to make it happen within the next couple of weeks. It will require us backfilling teachers, hiring. This is going to be, both for the town and the schools, a hugely costly endeavor, millions of dollars. In fact, I'll lay it out now, I intend to work with the school committee to come to the October Town Meeting for a request for an additional appropriation, because there is no way that we can operate an additional school, run the program that we need to, in a way that we're outlining, without additional funding. I'm hoping, candidly, that the federal government will eventually come through on that regard, but in lieu of that, we will need to figure out resources to make this come off safely. And safety will be the priority. At any point, I don't think that we can safely start school, we will not, we will go remote. Or, as you suggest, Mr. Bullion, that as we get into the winter, or later in the spring, and the trajectory of the disease changes, we will pivot to a remote model to make sure that it's safe. I want the community to know, and I will let you know, that we're going into this with the hybrid model, because we believe the trends in Massachusetts and in New England in particular are good and positive, and we think we have a good plan in place and a healthy plan. So, some folks have said to me, well, why are you doing this when a week later, you're going to go remote? Well, that's, that would never be the plan, I would just go to remote in the beginning. Instead, we believe that the health and the science suggests we can do this, and we can do this for a while, I hope, for the rest of the year, but, as you suggest, we will be responsive, and in that case, we will provide an excellent program for our students, if they are home learning remote.
Thank you. Dan, you haven't raised your hand, Dan Matthews, but do you have anything to add here?
Well, I just want to thank you, Dan, for coming in and speaking to us, we're covering a lot of ground here, between race equity work that you're doing and the COVID response, and it's all difficult, and it all has to be done, and it's going to take a sustained effort in both cases. I think you're on the right track on the school opening, and it's thoughtful, we need, I think that having the schools open safely is really the goal, and I know that you're using good judgment regarding that. And on the equity issues, these are things that have been with us for a long time, we've made progress, but there's a great deal more to do. The way that you've outlined it is a big help, and if either on the school opening side, or the equity, or the race equity work, if there are things that we can do to be helpful, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I do have one question about the Medco kids, because they have extended bus rides to get to school. So are we doing anything in particular that we're sure they're safe while they're in transit?
Well, we're doing that all the time, but you mean in particular during the...
Because of the COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, so let me respond in two ways. First of all, regarding masks, the question that came up earlier, we are not going to be allowing gaiters or bandanas for students or staff. Instead, Dr. Stern, our school physician, and Barbara Singer, in consultation with the Department of Public Health, we're looking at cloth masks for staff, or student, and students, or surgical-type masks that have multiple layers, those are the best ones. We are not, as Tiffany suggested, looking at N95 masks, they're inappropriate for the school setting and unnecessary, and quite frankly, as doctors and nurses will say, uncomfortable. So, that's the, kind of, the mask question. Regarding our Boston resident students, and all of our students who are on transportation, one of the rules that we have is that we can only have one child in a seat. We have three children in the seat right now, or six across. Now, during this period of pandemic, we can only have one child in a seat. That's why the hybrid model helps, because we literally cut the school bus population in half, dealing with one half one week and the other half the following. The same is true on our Boston resident buses. So we will have the same, the same safety procedures for our Boston students as we do for our Needham students. On our Boston buses, we will have bus monitors who will help the driver facilitate, particularly for younger students, your ride is a longer ride, and to help them settle down and to settle in. And lastly, I'll tell you that we've been working with a partner, partners from the Harvard School of Public Health, they've done some modeling on transportation for us, and they've showed us ways to help keep the buses ventilation flowing with open windows, even in cold, even in the cold months. And with one child to a seat, they feel that we'll be in really good shape for a safe ride to school, whether you're coming from Boston or from Needham.
Thank you, Dan. With that, are there any other comments before we go to the next agenda item? Yes, Mary Ann?
I just wanted to say, Dan, thank you for this opening plan, which I do feel is guided by science, and I understand that people are tremendously anxious, but at the infection levels that we're seeing in Needham, we are in a good place. And, good place, relative to what it can be, but in a good place for now, and I appreciate that we are bringing children back to school, because I think that is where we would all love to have them. So, thank you.
Completely agree.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for coming in, thank you Tiffany for staying around. Dan, we wish you well with the opening efforts, it's an enormous job, we all can appreciate how tough it's got to be for you and your people. Thanks again. That brings us to the part of our agenda that is the town manager's portion of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would add that the superintendent has invited me to numerous, numerous meetings of the leadership team putting together the planning, and the number of details that they have worked out and are continuing to work out is really mind-boggling, so I give them an enormous amount of credit. For my agenda, Mr. Chair, we have, our first item is to seek the approval of the Select Board on the appointment interim Director of Public Works, Charis Lustig. This is one of the nice things that we get to do. Rick Merson, our Director of Public Works for 48 years, will be retiring, which is also nice for him, and there will be much more on that subject in the coming month, Mr. Chair, in the September meetings, but the purpose of this meeting, I'm going to invite Charis to come as well, in case you have any questions for her. She has been willing and is willing to step up as interim director through the fiscal year. Charis came to us as an intern in 2005, in fact, she was an intern in the Select Board Town Manager's Office, and she's held numerous jobs in Needham ever since. She's had, even including a stint as Acting Director of Building Maintenance, which was something that we really needed, and she really stepped up and did for us, which was amazing. You know, 15 years later, to be able to appoint an intern to be the Director of Public Works on an interim basis is something that probably doesn't happen that often, and it's something I think that we're really proud of. The best, some of the best staff and the best directors we have come from within, and that's certainly true with Charis, and I know you've seen her in action, particularly on the administrative and finance side, and you'll get to see more of her in the management of the entire largest department on the town side that we have. Charis, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I just add that it's just been a pleasure to be able to serve the community that I grew up in, and I'm excited for this new opportunity.
Thank you. Charis, a lot of, all of us have seen the quality of your work, most recently, the work you did on Town Meeting. And I know we've all been very impressed, and I think that Kate could not have made a better choice, so I'm very pleased about that. We have a motion that will make this all possible, and Mr. Bullion would like to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, and I'd like to say hi to Charis and congratulations, well, we haven't voted yet, that the Select Board vote to approve the appointment of Charis Lustig as interim Director of Public Works effective October 1st, 2020, in accordance with Section 20, Paragraph C, or C of the Town Charter.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Burley, seconds. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Matthews?
I just want to say what everybody else has already said, it's been great working with you, Charis, and you've really proven yourselves, yourself to me and to the other members of the Board, and done great work for us. This is a, this, as you know, is a major responsibility in our government system, and I really, makes me feel good that we put someone in it, that we've got real confidence, and I wish you all the best, and as always, I'm sure it's not always going to be easy, but if you need support from the Board, just let us know, we'll do what we can.
Mr. Bullion had his hand up.
I just want to say to Charis, I think one of the tasks that you might want to undertake prior to Rick leaving is figure out a way of downloading from his brain all of the information that he has, that he has acquired over 48 years, because, you know, having, you know, all of us having worked with Rick for so many years, we are in awe at the amount of information that he has, and I know that you will be using him wisely and diligently for any and all questions and knowledge base, but congratulations, we haven't voted yet.
Yeah, again, it's just going to sound like an echo chamber, but we all feel the same way, so I've worked with you, I remember on the Finance Committee, and then as a Select Board member, and then on certain projects, and always moving things ahead, so congratulations, and it's a lot of work, and I know Rick won't be that far away for fielding some questions, so, congratulations.
Mary Ann, did you want to say something?
So I didn't speak, but the answer is, I will say thank you to Rick, and we'll do that in the future, and I'm definitely on Team Charis, so, looking forward.
Thank you. This brings us to the vote. Mr. Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Congratulations, Charis.
Mr. Chair, Charis says the interim DPW Director will be only the fifth director since 1934.
Wow. And I understand...
And one of those directors only served 18 months.
And it's not going to snow this year, Charis, so you should have an easy...
Should be good.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Charis.
Kate, we still have the floor. I'm sorry, Mary Ann?
It's not going to snow, but on the other hand, it is 2020, so heaven knows what else it might do.
Yes. Kate, the floor is still yours.
Okay, so, Charis, you're set, we'll be moving on to our update on the Unite Against Racism project that we began with the listening session by the Board at your last meeting. I wanted to note that with your agenda items, and posted on the Unite Against Racism page on our website, is a list of items that we have, about 82 items, that we have heard from the community through email, through conversations, and through that meeting in July. These are items that is a catalog sorted in general groupings of things that people have suggested that the community look at, this is not our recommendation of things to do, it's quite a long list. We do have for you a few recommendations for discussion tonight. First, I wanted to report on a couple of things that we have done. We, at the request of the folks who came to the listening session on July 21st, we promoted the Lived Experience Project on the website, so folks can access that through our website if they wanted to, post to lived experiences and share their stories. We summarized all of those items, as I mentioned, and posted them up on the website. We posted a flyer promoting the Attorney General's Discrimination Hotline in Town Building, and as the Board knows, the Board authorized us to hire an investigator to investigate the incident in the Needham Police Department from this past January, so those are things that we have done. We think some immediate things that could happen in this initiative... We think some immediate things that could happen in this initiative is to include this topic on upcoming meetings so that it's top of mind, so we can keep things moving ahead. We had a project called Over Zero Resilience Workshop that we had scheduled in March. Will have to look a lot different now and so we do recommend that we start talking about pulling that off now in a different capacity than it was intended, which was an in-person meeting with things like bagels and lunch, which don't seem to happen anymore. We think it would be helpful if we could reach out to the lived experience project and find out some of the information that they've uncovered, if they're willing to share that with us and we can use that in our work. We are, we will be recommending to the board the establishment of a discrimination complaint process that could, where folks could access, folks in the community could access town government as a way to help them if they have issues. And so we'll be recommending that to you in the in the very near future. Promoting a website that summarizes the board committee and board and committee vacancies that we have and then also proposing that the board adopt a goal to work to diversify the pool of candidates for the elected and appointed positions that we have in town. Because as many people said, can't be what you can't see and that seemed, it's a very common theme in terms of trying to find a way to increase that pool. So those are the immediate things that we suggest to the board. And then finally, we do recommend that this work could be guided by a working group. It wouldn't be a group that would last forever, but it would be a group of members of the Needham community to help us lead the initiative, to help comb through all the recommendations that have been made and help us to prioritize how we might put those into practice. They could work with us to articulate and recommend a shared vision for racial equity in Needham and we felt that it would be a coordinated way to do that. They could establish protocols and practices for getting community feedback. We would set up communication structures to ensure that the work is sustainable. As Superintendent Kudikens noted, there's a working group to set up procedures, but there, there's never a time when you can say you're done and that we need to make sure that the work continues and there's ways to to monitor it and to measure it and make sure that it continues after an initial push in August of 2020. And then again, as we said, looking at the recommendations and prioritizing ways to move forward that make the most sense for the community. So these are the things that staff recommends that the board consider and we'll have these on your agenda again. We'll work with the chair and vice chair to talk about if the board is interested in moving forward with the working group, to find a process for identifying people who would have an interest in in serving and making sure we have a mix of people of all backgrounds on that committee.
Thank you, Kate. And as we're all aware, there are many groups of people in Needham and in our schools who are working on this issue and looking at the work of other towns on the racial equity issue and all aspects of community life that that affect people from different backgrounds and different racial characteristics and and origins. So we always welcome public input on these issues because it affects every one of us in one way or another. So thank you for the update, Kate. Any board member care to comment? Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, just, just thank you, as we've, as we've said, it, this is going to be ongoing work for a long time and I think you just, it's well with what the superintendent reported to us and there's more to be done. Thank you.
Okay, Kate.
Moving on to small cell wireless facilities. Board will recall a number of well-attended meetings where we were discussing Verizon requests to locate small cell facilities in town leading towards a 5G network. And during that, the board had asked us to develop a policy that would be comprehensive and that we could give it to small cell wireless providers and that they would have a good sense of what it is that Needham would require, that it would be completely consistent with the federal law that highly regulates what local governments are allowed to do in this area. And so we engaged an outside consultant to help us put this policy together, which the board has here tonight. We would post this and ask the board to consider adopting after any period of public input at a meeting in September or October. So this is really a discussion item for, to hear from you as to what you might like to see included. But if I could ask Sandy if you have access to share the PowerPoint, which she's working on. Is that working?
Yes.
You just, perfect, if you could just go to the next slide, Sandy. Because Sandy is operating the slides, I'm going to have to say next slide a lot, which I know is annoying in presentation. So again, Congress prohibited local adoption of RF exposure regulations, as we talked about at quite a bit when we had a lot of these hearings. But there, we can include a requirement showing that the emission standards are met on a cumulative basis. And so this is something that our Board of Health and our Health Department felt very strongly about is that one small cell in one area is one thing, but there are a number of providers and looking at the installation of small cells in isolation without noticing what's on the pole next to it is something that doesn't make sense. And so this policy is very clear that we can look at those standards on a cumulative basis. It also requires that the providers certify compliance with RF emissions and exposure regulations. Thanks. So I'll go these, go through these very quickly, Mr. Chair, but the key provisions are the, they're required to follow the exposure, that they can't extend more than 10 feet above the pole supporting them or 60 feet in total in height. These seem to be the standards that many communities comparable to the town of Needham have adopted and which are working well in those communities. No part of the the facility can extend further than four feet from the pole if it's 20 feet or higher and two feet if it's 20 feet above the ground. No part can extend below eight feet, so you know, making sure that that clearance is maintained. If technically feasible and not unduly burdensome, that the facility is not installed within 180 feet of another pole-mounted facility. This is something that has been working in other communities as a way towards trying to complete, keep distance from these facilities and also proposing 50 feet from a residential dwelling or a school structure. The current language says school property, but we really intended that to mean that the building itself, given that property lines are very different in in homes and schools, and we'll make sure that's clear if it makes sense to the board. The dimensions of the antenna not exceeding 16 inches in diameter or 40 inches in height. We want to make sure that the the facilities are similar or blend in with the appearance of existing equipment on the pole and the color of the pole, which is something that the board had many conversations with the provider, Verizon, which is the only provider who has been in to see us. Again, no facilities on double poles that they would have to be, double poles would have to be fixed before they could install or get a grant of location for that. Obviously, the pole has to be able to support the facility, making sure that the installation doesn't cause any damage to our public shade trees and that if there is any digging or trimming, that they will be very careful around those trees. These are items, Mr. Chair, that mirror many of the things that the board had conversation about and that we heard from the public, but that we are now proposing to formalize with the providers and ask the board for any feedback and that we'll certainly get any public feedback on these proposals to bring them to a vote of the board this fall. One other thing I would mention is that Sandy and I have been working with Verizon to provide you with an updated list of the of the facilities that were approved by the board by grant of location and which ones have been activated, which ones have been installed and where the required RF reporting documents are if if they have been activated. And finally, this is a policy that is a grant of location policy for the location of these facilities in the public way. Any installation on private property would be part of the the zoning bylaw in our conversation. The consultant that we worked with suggested that we might want to look at that wireless facility bylaw and talk to the planning board about that because it was installed almost completely with cell towers in mind and not small facilities. So once this is adopted, that may be a reasonable next step for us in terms of talking about what facilities for the future of 5G might look like in the town. So happy to answer any questions, as will Sandy, who did the bulk of the work on this project, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kate. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this aspect of regulation? Mr. Burley?
Yeah, I will just say, I think it's a great summary and policy of the feedback that we received at those hearings as far as the distance, location, the look of the the antenna. So I think it encapsulates what we heard as a board and thank you, Sandy and Kate, for putting it together. I think it really is the, what we heard, genesis of the thinking behind it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann, Cooley.
So I also want to say thank you because I do think this reflects what we discussed. Part of what's interesting to me about seeing this now, and it's what, a year and a half after the last time we talked about it, kind of, is how little progress I feel there's been in thinking about multiple vendors approaching us for 5G services and thinking about what the implications of there being 180 feet apart. If all five, you know, multiple vendors had to be that far from each other, would there even be enough space in town to create all that? It creates some interesting questions and I just have no idea how they'll resolve going forward.
I would say in answer to Ms. Cooley's question is that the policy does have a provision for the select board to waive any provision that is in there if it, if in your judgment it, you know, has to be done. So, you know, there could be a situation, as you said, but I think, I think the question of four providers blanketing the town with facilities that only have a very short range is a very open question.
Yeah.
Sandy, please.
If I may add one more thing, Ms. Cooley, and that is the FCC provides for, if our regulations prove to be too burdensome on the utility, they have the right to disagree.
To proceed. Thank you very, very much. Does anybody else have any comments? Thank you, excellent job on this and we are grateful. Proceed, Ms. Town Manager.
So, Mr. Chair, the next item is to ask the board to open the special town meeting warrant. As constituted right now, there are 16 articles in the warrant. Just, just to run through them very briefly, property tax assistance program is something that we deferred from May and that we strongly recommend because the typical period for making these awards is in the the late winter, early spring and we would still recommend that the board recommend approval of that program. Something that we talked about very briefly was the concept of an economic development grant program that might provide assistance for small businesses in our downtown and other business areas who have had to make physical or technological or safety improvements to their facilities or also to convert and pivot to outside seating. And so the proposal would be there, we will have a fleshed out proposal to talk to you about before town meeting, but it would be, you know, a one-time only grant program where the funds would be distributed based on the number who had applied, but perhaps a grant cap of about $2,000. The, you know, a number of our local restaurants and businesses have had to install Plexiglas shields, they've brought in barriers, they created entire parklet systems in parking lots and so consistent with the board's action in lowering the liquor license fees for the coming year, this may be a way that the board and the town meeting would be willing to support our local businesses. So that's not for obviously vote tonight, but we'll have more information for you on that one coming up. As the superintendent noted, the town and the schools are expecting some fairly significant costs associated with COVID-19. These are particularly in the area of education, public health and in building maintenance in terms of cleaning and maintenance and ventilation. So we will have a specific proposal for you in the coming month as well as proposal for funding. We will make a presentation to the board in early September about the need for a billing and collection software. This is something that has been on our working plan. It was originally a capital item and now that software is a, is a service, it has moved off of the capital plan and into financial warrant article territory. I will ask Dave at your meeting in September to, his and his staff to provide a description of why this software is urgent now, but I will only tell you that it's written in COBOL and there aren't a lot of people left who can either read or write in that language. And so we really, you know that we've done everything we can to trim costs and to the extent that Dave and the finance team need this on the warrant should tell you that they really believe it's imminently important. So we'll have a presentation for you in September. We have a placeholder for line item transfers. The annual appropriating for the transportation network fees, which are the Uber and Lyft fees that we get from the Commonwealth, shows the increasing number of rides originating in the town of Needham in the past year. The two zoning articles relating to the West Street zoning at the Avery property, these articles, Mr. Chair, are the articles that went to public hearing. They're not the final articles from the planning board, so we will expect to update the warrant before the warrant closes at your next meeting. Again, another article is the appropriating for the Walker Lane sewer, which is one that we had moved off of the May warrant, which had been an article by petition. This language is actually being updated and will be presented to you with an update on the rates that the town uses to calculate the cost of construction for work that we do on installation of sewers. We did it five, six years ago and the costs have have changed and we want to make sure that we're remaining compliant with the charter that says that the town can only bear a certain portion of the installation of a sewer by Betterment. But the costs associated with this project, while appropriated by the town, will be recouped by Betterment, either immediately by a butter's paying or by Betterment over a period of On happy news, the town meeting will be asked to rescind the debt authorization for the Sunita Williams elementary school by in the, to the tune of $9 million. So that is a very positive development on the construction, construction of the project and the acquisition of the land. And the community preservation articles, as included are the emergency rental assistance program that the Affordable Housing Trust approved submission of, the first church, the First Baptist Church Preservation Project, the First Parish Church, Steeple Reservation, Community Farm Growing Beds and the the traditional Community Preservation Fund article that are in there. The CPC will have its public hearing on September 2nd, so the CPC may decide not to move forward on one or or more of these articles. I don't know that for sure. And then again, the final citizens petition that the board asked the petitioner to move from May to the fall regarding the map change to the residents' B zoning district. So, you know, that's a long explanation. We will be, we are working with the moderator on logistics. Sandy is taking over with Charis's help to do some, to do the logistics planning for us for the October 4th town meeting. And we will be sending out guidance to proponents as to when we would expect their presentations to be posted through our public information officer to the town meeting webpage. I will say, we are also doing an after-action discussion about things that went well and that could be improved for the town meeting and I would be happy to hear from the board if there are things that you heard. For example, we heard that handicap parking wasn't probably well enough marketed and we will be doing more work on that area. So anything that you hear or you've heard or that you would like us So, anything that you hear, or you've heard, or that you would like us to consider in setting up that town meeting. But I will say, the ability to watch the presentations in advance and at their leisure was highly valued by town meeting members, and so, that's something that would continue for this town meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Now, this is an administrative act to open the warrant. The articles that we'll be discussing as we go through the process leading up to town meeting will involve discussions with the public and finalization of some of those articles that remain on the warrant. Is there a motion to open the warrant? Mr. Borelli?
I would move that the vote, that the board vote to open the warrant for the October 4th, 2020 special town meeting.
Second on the motion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Borelli, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley, did you want to say something before we conclude the vote? You're on mute.
The only thing I was thinking is, I'm just recognizing that it's still a short time, actually. I know it's a long time, but it's a short time between now and October 4th.
Yes.
And, so getting out assignments so that people can actually be thinking about their presentations, so there's enough time to get those out ahead, is going to be, like, literally the next thing we're going to be doing, that's all I'm thinking.
And if anybody on the board has thoughts about which articles they think they would like to take, if they would get that information from Ms. Borelli, myself, and the town manager, that would be great. So, did you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Borelli voted yes, Ms. Cooley voted yes, Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous, the warrant is open, and we'll go to the next item on the list.
Mr. Chair, I would note for the record that this, if the board adopts this regulations for the sale of alcoholic beverages, we will have made incredible momentum towards two of the board's goals for the current, last fiscal year, so that's really helpful. We discussed the, the proposal to include a section on consequences and fines for violations of the policy at a previous meeting, and as for public comment, we did send it out to all the license holders, and we did not receive any public comment from them. We did have a conversation with the chairs and the Board of Health and the Director of Health and Human Services, and there, a good conversation on ways to increase inspection, increase training opportunities, particularly in the age of Zoom, and to ensure compliance so that we don't need to resort to the sections on the violations. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you wanted to add to, anything to that?
Well, I did want to thank Mr. Bullion and Ms. Cooley for the extraordinary work that they did in looking at our existing regulations and visiting other towns, sitting through their processes when they had violations. So that was very helpful, and I'd like to open it up for discussion on the, on the regulation prior to a motion. Does anybody have any comments that they'd like to make before we have a motion? Mr. Bullion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bullion moves to adopt the regulations as presented in the agenda for this evening.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Say again?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Good job, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, then.
Okay. Are you seconding the good job that Mr. Bullion did as well?
Both of them.
Okay, excellent. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that's unanimous. Again, thank you for your work, and let's see if this helps us get better compliance. Kate, you're on a roll.
I know. I have, actually have a few items. It's been a while since the board had a public meeting. I was asked to mention the drought conditions that the Commonwealth is now facing. Very recently, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs declared a Level 2 significant drought in every region of the Commonwealth. The temperatures are well above normal, and rainfall has been well below normal. So it's been, it's a very difficult time. This is particularly important for people to be careful about open burning. You know, people were having socially-distanced fire pits in their backyards, just asking people to pay incredibly close attention because the drier the brush, the drier the ground, the more difficult situation that is for fire spread. The state's actually asking residents to be mindful of the amount of water they're using proactively in order to make sure that, that there's sufficient water available for fire in prevent, protection. So, the drought situation is, it's a very difficult year for drought. Anybody has a lawn like mine, I'm sure you've seen the same thing.
Brown and tan is a very good color for a lawn.
Another item, Mr. Chair, is that the Highland-
Ms. Cooley has a question.
Can I ask you a question, and you may not have it? I am also curious about where we are relative to the 60 gallons per person per day, you know? Now that we've taken off our restrictions and that everybody's been home since March, you know, how does that shift that, and just in terms of the metric?
That's a great question. We report that in February, so I can get you the last one and find out if there's a way to update, whether they can do it month by month.
So we're now six months after, yeah.
John?
I will note that on the MWRA website, that the Quabon Reservoir, which services us and 60 other cities and towns in eastern Massachusetts, is still holding at about 95% capacity. So, they, we have plenty of water. I'm not telling people to squander water, but, you know, but, you know, we, because we're an MWRA community, we are not under the same types of, of conditions that towns like Randolph, Braintree, and Holbrook would be in, for example. They have their own water supply, and they don't have access to MWRA.
Mr. Bullion is right, their utilities are very different with respect to where they might find themselves based on this drought. I will say that in the last month, there've been two instances where MWRA connection to Needham had a leak, and there was a possibility they would have to shut that down, and the town of Needham itself cannot meet the full need if people are watering as if the MWRA was available. So, if that were to happen, we would be putting the word out pretty quickly that it would be an urgent situation. This update was really to let people know that there is drought condition, and that particularly with respect to fire protection, is something that we need to be very concerned about.
Thank you, Kate. Do you have anything else?
I do, I have five more.
Oh, go.
The Highland Corridor project, which is a project that people in, in the town of Needham have been working on, I think a quarter of a century, has finally begun. I think it actually truly is a quarter of a century. This is the project that will renovate the roadway and add infrastructure between Webster Street and Needham at the fire station and Route 9 in Newton. It's something that I think every member of this board who's been chair has gone into Boston for a meeting on, and, you know, you have another meeting, and it's, it's just, you know, we're all, rather than there probably more than once. But happily, it got on the tip. The city of Newton and the town of Needham worked really hard to make that happen, and the, the contract was awarded in July, early July. The contract completion date, August 12th, 2023, so that's when they expect every punch item, punch list item to be done. So, there would be, there is a section on our webpage set up, and we will be posting periodic reports as we have them, as well as making sure that we have contact information that we can give out, so when people contact us, we can tell them where to get more information.
Kate, this was a project where Jack Cogswell spent enormous amounts of time, energy, and strategy to help us get to this point, so I think it would, it's appropriate that we remember him at this time. He was a friend to all of us on this board.
Jack actually walked up and down Highland Avenue and talked to every property owner.
Yeah. John, did you have something?
Yes, and, and speaking of every property owner, there are a number of many small businesses in that stretch, starting on the, on the web, down towards the Webster Street end of Highland Ave, and obviously moving up closer to the Newton line, and it's imperative that those small businesses who are already struggling because we're in a pandemic be given the utmost communication with MassDOT and their contractors as this project proceeds, because there are going to be some tough times, further tough times for these businesses, even when the pandemic is done, with respect to people being able to navigate those areas and getting to those businesses and keeping those businesses going. So, as long as, and I know, Kate, you and I have talked about this, and, and I know you and your office are working diligently with the businesses that have reached out to me, and I'm sure other businesses as well, but I think it's incumbent upon MassDOT to make sure that they, there should be a good, steady stream of communication. Contact people so that businesses can continue operating. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Anybody else want to weigh in on this before we go to the next item? Okay, Kate.
I just wanted to take a minute to note the retirement of Paul Droni, police officer in town, most recently a detective who retired this summer after 37 years of service. And, you know, in this time of pandemic, it's hard to invite people over, and just really want to give him a shout out, because I spent, I worked with him a lot, and I know many of you, probably all of you have met Paul Droni. Just really wish him the best, so.
Thank you.
My next one, I'm going to ask Katie to update you on the Park and Rec Summer. Owen?
Great, thanks, Kate. At the end of last week, we were thrilled to announce that Park and Rec was able to extend programs and pool opening for an extra week. So, for the recreational programs and tennis lessons, they added this week as the extra week, they're wrapping up on Friday. For the pools at Rosemary, they are now open until August 30th. It is a small silver lining that high schools and colleges started later than anticipated. We are able to keep all of our great summer staff on for a little bit longer. And also on playgrounds, there's been a lot of interest. All playgrounds are now open. They have been brought up to the maintenance that we require, and the playground at Cricket Field is being used by the Park and Rec program until 2:00 PM through Friday, but otherwise there's, all the other playgrounds are open and accessible to the public, and so we encourage people to get out and safely enjoy the outdoors. I just want to end, thank the Park and Rec team and the Park and Forestry Division at DPW. They've been really working hard, and they were as excited as anyone to be able to extend the season a little bit. So, thanks.
Nicely done. Thanks, Katie.
Very nice.
The next one is something that our working group on economic development put together on the dine around Needham Progressive Dinner, which is tomorrow night, which is actually, which is very exciting. Tomorrow night, I'm sorry, if I have the date wrong?
No, it's 19.
Okay, good. Sorry. There's a rain date, that's what I'm looking at, on August 26th. Anyway, so, Mr. Chair, Capella, Cook, Hearth, Latina, Pancho's, Rice Barn, Sweet Basil, and as of today, Masala Art are all participating in this event, and the, the food options look great, and I think the price point looks very good, and so I hope people will sample and come down, and the weather looks perfect, and it's, it's, it was a wonderful idea. I know that Sandy and Mary Ann and Mo had worked on, so thank them for that, it's wonderful. And the final thing I have, Mr. Chair, is just to remind folks that early voting starts this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, from noon to 5:00 at Town Hall. The, the access to the building is going to be in the front door on Garrity's Way on Saturday, but because of the farmer's market, will be moved around to the side on Sunday. And then, early voting will also occur all next week, Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 5:00, and then Friday from 9:00 to noon. And the town clerk tells me that as of midday today, she and her amazing team of full-time and cadre of part-time staff have sent out 8,656 ballots for residents. So, I do imagine that our polling locations will look a lot different on September 1st than they might have a year ago, but that people are very satisfied with the ability to vote by mail, and we'll see if people want to come on, come in and vote early, we'll see what happens. And with that, Mr. Chair, I've completed my adjournment.
And should we also encourage people to use the, the box outside Town Hall as an alternative to the mail?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. The, the delivery box will accept a lot more ballots than the mailbox that was installed mostly for envelopes and checks. So, it is right on the driveway in front of Town Hall, it's bright red, you can't miss it, and we highly encourage people to come in and drop it off at the box anytime they want to do that.
Thank you, Kate. Does that conclude your report to the-
It does.
Well, then that brings us to board discussion, and the first item on our list is the Town Manager Evaluation, which Mr. Bullion, as last year's chair, took the responsibility for consolidating, putting together, and summarizing. So I'd like to call on Mr. Bullion to, to deliver that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I, I requested from my colleagues a, to execute a, an evaluation, the forms were provided by Kate, to each member of the board, along with a self-evaluation, and each member got their evaluation back to me in a timely manner, and I put together a, what is a composite of the five evaluations, and it is posted on the, I believe it's posted on the town website as part of this agenda packet, and the only thing I'd like to do is just very, very briefly, go through some of the comments from members of the board without, I didn't indicate on the composite who made the comment, but I just, I did note the comments. Overall evaluation narrative, that is the last item in the evaluation. One member, outstanding work and leadership in a challenging year. I will echo that a, that one of the things about Kate as Town Manager, and all of us for that matter, but this is about Kate, is that she has a playbook for everything that, that this town has, comes before it, because she's been here for a number of years, she has worked hard to, to develop a system, both with senior staff, and then that trickles down to wall staff in the town, so that for any eventuality, whether it be a snowstorm or a hurricane, or occasionally a sunny day, that the town comes along. We now have a pandemic, and I have no doubt that what Kate is doing is creating a playbook that will be put in the archives for 100 years from now, Kate, to be pulled out by probably your successor at that time, who will, when faced with a pandemic, will say, aha, this is how the town responded. But let me go on. This has been a particularly difficult year, based on COVID-19 and major political issues. Kate has worked extremely hard to keep Needham moving forward and balance the safety needs of the town with the practical needs to keep government operating effectively. We must continue to ensure that all voices and viewpoints of the community are heard in order to thrive as a community. Another comment, Ms. Fitzpatrick is a very high-performing Town Manager in every important aspect of her position. In the three areas where she meets expectations, she meets, where she meets expectations, it is because a lot of those functions are done by others whom she supervises. I have seen, and this is one of the members, I have seen a very much more proactive approach than is normally required of someone in her position during the current emergencies we are dealing with. And then, the last comment I'll make is, a comment was made, I believe that Needham runs smoothly, as smoothly as it does because of the care that she takes with hiring and developing her senior leadership team. That is the sign of an excellent manager. Kate works well with the select board and is responsive to the demands that come with a very involved board. All five of us know, we are a very involved board, but I think that's what makes this a team. And Kate, I met with Kate prior to this moving forward on the agenda, we met last week, and did we met this week? No, we met last week, that's right, that's today's Tuesday. But Kate, thank you for all you do, and, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
I think the explanation on meets expectations is where she didn't get a rating that said exceeds, exceeds- get a rating that said exceeds expectations and that was because she has assigned those tasks to people who perform them well. Any other comments from the board? I think Mr. Bullion's summary reflects well what we all concluded, but go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. Excellent work. A very difficult year.
Matt?
I was just gonna say extremely challenging year and glowing recommendations. And I feel like with this zoomer on a game show, Kate, we have to guess who said what and value them out, but they were all glowing comments and sincere. So hopefully better times ahead once we get through this.
Mary Ann?
And, and I'm going to say on Kate's behalf that I actually appreciate the, the spirit in which the board has embraced our recognizing that there are areas where Kate can in fact meet expectations and there are areas where she is in fact truly spectacular and we do say that she exceeds. Because that is a message that I know she works hard to give to everybody who works for us as well. And so I say thank you for helping us to set that standard and, and making it the way that's appropriate.
And Mr. Bullion?
Yeah, I'd just like to, the only comment that I'd like to say that I'm sure that Kate is diligently working on is it would be really nice if Kate, you and your team could have a vaccine for the coronavirus sooner than later would be very helpful.
That's exceeding expectations, Mr. Bullion.
And, and she would get a, a mark that represents exceeding expectations, Matt. So I concur with you. So thank you.
If anybody could do it, our team of Tiffany and Tim and their, their colleagues, but I would say, Mr. Chair, it's been a complicated and difficult year for all of us in local government, all of you and all of us and all of us who are trying to live through it. And you know, just a constant reminder that we're still in a pandemic and that we still have to worry because it's very hard and when it's summer and people want normalcy. But it is an honor, Mr. Chair and all the board members to, to work here and to, to serve in this role. And I really appreciate your support.
Well, I think that, thank you, Kate, very much. And I think this board knows probably better than most people in the public how difficult it has been during these several months for you and your team to keep this town floating above water, doing the services it has to do. And in addition, maintaining your own life. It's awe inspiring and we are very, very grateful for your work. John?
I would move that the board vote to approve the town manager consensus evaluation overview document dated August 11th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, that makes it unanimous. See you again next year on this topic, Kate. That brings us to an update of our fiscal year 2020, 21 goals.
Mr. Chair, this would be typically the board would have a meeting devoted to going through the goals and adopting new goals and it isn't really, we don't have a real good mechanism for that right now. So I thought I would just bring the goals to your attention, ask the board perhaps to get back to me on what you think the priorities for this fiscal year should be. I know there are some things we need to add such as our United Against Racism Initiative, which wasn't on there last year. There may be things that you think staff time should be devoted towards and I would appreciate hearing what those are. I would say that in the immediate short term, the board was very clear that opening the pool and having recreational programs for youth was a high priority. And I think that we, we heard that and we devoted the resources that we had available in that direction. I think that the next six weeks are going to be devoted to opening the public schools and people may not realize how much townside effort that is, particularly in public health, but also in building maintenance and in public work. So that is really going to be a priority of ours through the middle of September, if not through, if not, well, and probably longer. But that being said, there are certainly items that we can start moving ahead on now that we've finished a couple of the others. So if you, if, Mr. Chair, if there's a way that board members can get them to me and I can make presentation to you in September and October as to what makes the most sense.
I think that's great. I think that to the extent that you can get those to Kate as soon as possible, that will give her flexibility in terms of rolling them out for us to discuss. John has his hand up.
Kate, I just want to ask you one question about, yes, I understand the school's opening huge, huge, huge. Are we, have we canceled all indoor recreational programs in, in the school buildings through, for the next, through the school year and basketball, other, other act, school, other school related activities? Is everything canceled out? And what about outdoor sports?
I, I do not believe that outdoor sports, I don't believe that the MIAA has come out with its final discussion, at least I haven't heard it. I do believe that the superintendent has canceled all nighttime activities for the foreseeable future after the school day and after the, to the extent that extended day is there. So I can follow up with the particulars, but that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Matt?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify a little bit, so the governor issued guidance as far as outdoor athletics and Mrs. Patrick said about the MIAA. But in general, for example, baseball is playing, depending on the risk category that's assigned to that group, then they can play. But they have to have additional measures if they're higher risk. And for example, might be only be able to scrimmage, not have a game, might only be able to have townwide contact instead of town to town contact. So there's a, there's a chart that you can go through, a flow chart that tells you where you fall and then once you realize where you fall, what you can actually do. And you can do even more if you do more, more practice, you know, of hygiene and, and other, other sorts of implementations of measures to keep the kids safe. So it's a complicated answer to a question, but fall sports in certain instances will continue. And so it'll be up to the schools on actual school sports.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Yes, youth sports is a little different from actual school sports. So there is, there is soccer also going on this summer. And so it is a very complicated matrix, but there is activity ongoing. There was a soccer clinic last week, for instance, over at DeFazio and Pollard. So I think there's more to come on the future of school sports.
Thanks. Now, there is a town common preservation committee meeting tomorrow. Do you want to address that, Kate?
Mr. Chair, I think this was your conversation about what decoration on the common?
Yes. Thank you for reminding me. The town common is a public space. And therefore it needs to be a comfortable place for everybody in the community. We haven't had a regulation that talks about what can be placed on the surfaces of the common by private individuals or groups. And I think it's important for us to develop a common understanding of what's appropriate or not appropriate for individuals to place along the surfaces of the common and around Town Hall. From my perspective, I think it is more prudent not to allow for decoration of the town common without express approval from some public body or town the town. But I'd like to open up the discussion because I know we recently had some political statements on the common. And although they reflect a lot of sentiment present in the town, they don't reflect everybody else's, necessarily reflect every perspective. And that could lead in the future to decorations or statements on the common, which might be truly offensive to a large portion of our community. So I'd like to open up the discussion on that. Matt?
Mr. Chair, I agree with that sentiment. And I think no matter what the message, I think when people congregate on the common or they're there to eat, we're constantly being bombarded by messages wherever we are. And I think it's nice just to have a space, no matter what it says or what it's promoting or what it's not promoting, just to have a space where there isn't any type of chalking or graffiti, whatever you want to call it, unless it's, you know, this board says that that's, you know, what we'd like to see on the common. We've spent a lot of money to renovate the common and have a, a nice area. And I think it diminishes that look when you have random types of workings on, on the common. So I would like to see our board weigh in if people want to do something decorative in nature.
Yeah, I think it's one thing to have a demonstration on the common, which people are free to do.
Yes.
Vigils, but to actually place text on the surfaces of the common, I think goes against the, the common usage of the community. But Dan, do you want to weigh in on this?
I think that we're in a time when there's a lot of stress in the community and a lot of things going on. We all have our, our preferences. But I think I'd like to go scoldly about adopting any new, new policies and let's, and let's just work, work through a few instances on a case by case basis. I think I, that would be my preference, although of course I'm interested in everyone's opinion.
I would note that the last instance was not, it was left in place by the town. So we did not take any action to remove anything that somebody had put down. And I'm not judging the message, I'm just saying that we, we didn't disturb that in any way. But I think we have to think about the possibility that we might get messages that are truly offensive to large numbers of people or even to particular groups in town that might not be appropriate. So we need to think about how to address that. Mary Ann?
I actually did speak with the chief about the possibility of reaching out and having a conversation with the people who did the chalking on the town common and I will look forward to doing that. In many ways, I'm not somebody who's opposed to chalking and while I hear you on the town common and I would support this, I actually think that chalking is a health, a healthy form of expression and not a bad thing to have happen. And I would encourage us maybe to think about where we are good with chalking. Where might that be? So just something to think about.
I think that's an excellent point. I, I, free expression is a very important aspect of our community. But for example, we do not allow swastikas.
Correct.
So there's a lot of judgment involved and there are public spaces where that may or may not be appropriate to have political expression. And we need to think about that as a community and as a municipality. John?
I agree with Mary Ann on the chalking. And I think that, you know, let's, and I agree with Dan, let's take it slow. However, there's one thing that I hope we can all agree on is that the tent in the, in the common has been a huge success. And I would like to consider that in a non-political statement manner that we consider bringing the tent back next spring or summer, or whenever it is reasonably appropriate. Even if, even if we are post pandemic, after of course Kate and her team discovers the vaccine, we can, yeah, exactly. And we can still encourage the outside dining, the outside activity. But I think many, many people have come to enjoy on the common and, and other, other parts around town. But I think specifically the common, it really is wonderful. And, and to see so many people out there, people have expressed their positive attitude to me often, many, by many people. And I think and hopefully other, I'm sure my colleagues have, have heard the same thing. So in a non-political statement way, bring back the tent next year.
Well, you know, that goes back to something that was said much earlier, John, which, and I think Matt said it, it's about bringing the community together. So we want activities on the common that do that. And the tent is obviously something that does that. So.
Correct.
But with respect to how I led into this discussion, there is a committee that is looking at renovating the common. And that will be, that already has had one meeting and will be continuing to meet. That will be a capital project of the town. And that will be coming up and it will be consistent, I suspect, with a lot of the work that we did in the Streetscape program, which is also ongoing. Is there anything else on this subject?
Mr. Chair, I'll just, I'll just conclude and I understand that go slow in a place for chalking. I just think again, if you're bringing people together, you have divisive people, comments that people might see as divisive. And then they say, okay, we're going to put another comment that, that I agree with. It gets to be that clash that I think there should be a place in town where people should be able to go and not always have that staring that, that, you know, looking at that all the time. So I would like to see a policy where that area historic as well, right? That block's historic, not be chalked. And then we can talk about if there are other places where that would be more appropriate.
The common is a place where everybody in this town should be able to feel comfortable and, and relate to it as their space. It belongs to everyone. That's why it's called a common.
Yeah.
So with that, do we have any committee reports? Then is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Borelli?
My discussion is it's nice to end around eight o'clock. Cause we start at six, but yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
I almost called on you, Kate, because you're in the middle of my screen. Dan?
Yeah.
John?
Before I vote, I will say, I agree with you, Matt, that the disappointing thing is, is I'm looking out the window and it's dark. And it wasn't long ago that it was still light at this time. So.
I didn't Needham Heights, John.
Okay, well, then I've got to move over there. My vote is yes.
And the chair votes yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.